Good evening. So we thank God for this day, another chance to be able to read in His word, and also to pray together as His children. So we thank God for the care that He has taken for us through the... Since we last met on Tuesday last week, another able to come and meet here again. As we wait others to join us, we will start our program. First, I'll pray, and then Jobu will lead us in our singing session, where we'll sing two songs before we start our study. Let's pray. A kindly loving Master above, we thank you for your protection, we thank you for your guidance, and we thank you for the gift of life, which has enabled us to meet here again in your house, to be able to share from your word, and also to praise you, and also to bring us application we want to be further. As we share from your word, as we praise you, may you accept our praise for we pray and trust in Jesus' name. Amen.
Yes, so we begin with song number 7:5, “The Wonder of It All”. Let's sing like we... It is the wonder of it all. There's the wonder of sunset at him being, the wonder of sunrise I see. But the wonder of wonders that thrills my soul is the wonder that God loves me. Oh, the wonder of it all, the wonder of it all, just to think that God loves me. Oh, the wonder of it all, the wonder of it all, just to think that God loves me. There's the wonder of springtime in the best, the sky, the stars, the sun. But the wonder of wonders that fills my soul is the wonder that's only begun. Oh, the wonder of it all, the wonder of it all, just to think that God loves me. Oh, the wonder of it all, the wonder of it all, just to think that God loves me. Amen. Next song, Brielle, 2:06. 2:06. Face to face with Christ my Savior. Ligala, sing soprano. Yeah, sing soprano.
Face to face with Christ my Savior, face to face, what will it be? When will rupture, I behold Him, Jesus Christ who died for me. Face to face shall I behold Him far beyond the starry sky. Face to face in all His glory, I shall see Him by and by. Only faintly now I see Him with the duppling veil between. But a blessing it is coming when His glory shall be seen. Face to face shall I behold Him far beyond the starry sky. Face to face in all His glory, I shall see Him by and by. Lord rejoicing in His presence when a banish grief and pain. When the crooked ways are straightened and the dark things shall be plain. Face to face shall I behold Him far beyond the starry sky. Face to face in all His glory, I shall see Him by and by. Face to face, oh pleasurable moment, face to face to see and know. Face to face with my Redeemer, Jesus Christ who loves me so. Face to face shall I behold Him far beyond the starry sky. Face to face in all His glory, I shall see Him by and by.
We'll stop at that, and then continue the study. And maybe for just a recap of what we did last week to enable us to remember what we learnt, for those who were here and who are not here last week. Jobu, can you tell us something you took home last week? If you're here.
Yeah, last week, I remember we talked about the importance of prayer in the church. So we saw why we should always pray for our leaders in the church, because they are the power of influence. That's where decisions come from. So when we pray for them, at least they will be in a position to give us guidelines that are in accordance to the will of God. And so it will be easier for us to follow, yeah.
Amen. Sam, anything you took home last week?
I learnt that God doesn't want anyone to perish, and He wants everyone to be saved. And that's why we should pray for everyone, because the prayers... He listens to the prayers of those who follow what He wants, the righteous. So it's because of the prayers of the righteous that He will send back His Holy Spirit to talk to even those who have rejected the Holy Spirit, to talk to them again and tell them to turn back to God.
Amen, amen. So today, we're going to start from verse 8, that's of 2 Timothy. So we'll go as far as we'll manage today. So over to you, Collins, so they can lead us from verse 8 of 1 Timothy, so the second chapter. That's from verse 8.
Thank you very much, all, for coming. Last week, we said that, “See you again.” Next week, such like a time, and here it is with us again. We thank God, we don't take it for granted. And again, still, I can see the faces that were here last week. Still, they are here, and maybe two or three who has just joined us. Before we go far, I think we should pray, then start... Brother Manisa, give us a prayer.
Let us pray. Our Father, who art in heaven, we thank you, Lord, for this evening. We call upon your name, forgive us our iniquities and fill us with the Holy Spirit. As we studied your word, be with us in the name of Jesus Christ, we pray.
Amen, good. Aha, just a number of you have given us what they learnt last week. It was instructions on worshiping, and Paul could bring us that idea of starting, giving the prayer the first priority. I remember when Brian gave it out, I explained it out very well. Brother... My brother, if you never heard your pick on what you heard last week, please, if you can tell us something. Is Maun... Ian?
Yeah, Ivan.
Ivan Maunde.
So my take last week was that we should pray for all people irrespective of who they are, but we measured on the protocol, maybe especially their leaders. And we also saw the character of God, as brother Sam has said, that He doesn't want any person to perish, and that is why we should invest so much time in prayer. We should give it the first priority.
The first priority. Thank you very much. Now again, I think we can read from verse 5 to get the context, then the immediate context, then we settle on verse 7, then we deal more from verse 7 and verse 8 henceforth. May someone read for us. Jobu, give us verse 5, 6, 7.
Verse 5 says, “For there is one God and one mediator between God and men, the man Christ Jesus; verse 6, “Who gave himself a ransom for all to be testified in due time; verse 7, “For which I was appointed a preacher and an apostle.” I am speaking, the truths in Christ are not lying, a teacher of the Gentiles in faith and truth. Verse 8, “I desire therefore that the men pray everywhere, lifting up holy hands without wrath and doubting.” Verse 9?
No, up to that point. Verse 7, “And for this purpose I was appointed a herald and an apostle.” Just a question, why is it that Paul feel like he should confirm himself first that he was appointed? Could he not just give out his words and let it be that way? Should he come up with that confirmation? Remember, from verse 5 coming to verse 6, he's talking about worshiping one God. And verse 6 is saying that, “Who gave himself a ransom for all men and the testimony given in its proper time. And for this purpose I was appointed.” Why for this purpose? Why confirm to us that he was appointed? Anyone who is there to give us? Or we can start one by one. Why say that for a purpose? Why for that purpose? Maeda, I think you are here to start us. Why should he say that? Why should he confirm to us that he was appointed? Give him, please, a microphone. Make sure that he has a microphone. Why should it come to us that for a purpose? And their purpose is explained in verse 6. And again, he say that he was appointed. It's like he's confirming something to us.
Thank you. Just to echo on the writing, the scripture, you know, God has called us for a purpose.
Yes.
There's always a reason why God has called you. And all of us, we've been given talents, we've been given special messages and responsibilities.
Yes.
So this, he was trying to confirm that it's not just a quack, you know?
Yes.
Just, it's not just a false prophet from nowhere. Before he starts the work, he's confirmed that he's really sent by God with a special message and with a purpose.
It's true.
And I think we should also emulate that as young people. Yeah, when we are speaking, like we are seated here, we are speaking to the world. We affirm that we have been sent by Jesus Christ as our Lord and Savior. And He has given us a great commission.
Yes.
That go ye and make disciples. So that's why we are here, for a purpose. And it's good to have a purpose and a goal in life, isn't it? So that you don't just do things blindly, aimlessly. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I see Manisa has a point, before he come in with mine.
Yes, thank you, Ferma. Let us go to the book of Acts, chapter 9.
Acts, chapter 9.
Yeah, we'll start from verse...
Acts, chapter 9.
9:5, it's in 5... 9:5, saints... 4, “He fell to the ground,” that's Saul, “and had a voice saying to him, ‘Saul, Saul, why are you persecuting me?’
Yes.
Saul said, ‘Who are you, Lord?’ The first answer, ‘I am Jesus, the one you are persecuting.’ Let us go down there around 19. Around 15, 9:15, saying, “But the Lord, but the Lord Jesus said to Ananiah... Not that one? I want the one God commanding that Saul to go and preach to other. 15? 15. Saying, “But the Lord, Jesus said to Ananiah, ‘Go...’ Yes, Acts 9:15. “But the Lord Jesus said to Ananiah, ‘Go, I have chosen Saul for an important work. I want him to tell other nations, their rulers, and the people of Israel about me.’ You see, the way you have been appointed to do something or you have chosen to do something,
Yes.
it will be a reference point of you most of the time.
It is true.
Yeah, and that's why if you get Paul mostly referring, “I am apostle, I was chosen,”
Yes.
if because the Lord speaks to him that, that's why he keep referring that, that he never come as of... If you see other disciples, like John Taref Hellether,
Yes.
there's no way I understood, “I was chosen or anything.”
It's true.
Because despite he was chosen, but he never encountered challenge like this guy who was a persecutor, and the challenge is, that's why he refer to the point of appointment most of the time.
Thank you very much. Brian, I think I will come to you. After my explanation, you give us an answer to this. How is it important for Paul to confirm himself more so on his calling to the mission, to whoever is writing, to Timothy, whoever is writing the letter to? My explanation is this way. Actually, Paul, just from the beginning, he says that, Paul, an apostle of Christ Jesus, when you trace his background before he became a minister, he was someone who could stone the ministers to death. And now, here it is happening that he's the one who is out to preach the gospel. Again, I can call it like, he's now joining the ministers whom he had been killing, whom he had been stoning to spread the gospel. And now here, verse 6, it says very well that, “That who gave himself as a ransom for all men the testimony given in its proper time.” Actually, when we talk about going out to preach, there's nothing we preach. We preach just the prophecy of Jesus Christ, His death, His crucifixion, and His coming. Now here, Paul going out to preach, to testify, to preach, he's testifying who Jesus Christ is to his audience. And now, that's why he's very clear to come, to confirm to even us as we are reading this book right now, to know that he's testifying, but he's not testifying what he think it could be, but he was called for him to go out to testify whatever that he's testifying. Yes, Brian? Yeah, how relevant, how relevant it is to Timothy?
Okay.
This confirmation, this confirmation.
It came out, it came out as more of a comment than a question. Okay, I'll try to pick the question from the comment.
Please do.
So I think it's so important for...
Timothy?
Lord, let us now put ourselves in the issues of Timothy.
Yes.
Today, when Paul is trying to communicate this to Timothy, he's trying to... When Paul is putting this, that I'm a preacher who is preaching Christ, and I've been sent by, I've been sent by Christ. And for us to understand this, you have to understand the state that the church that Timothy was ministering unto. There was a lot of falsehood that had gone around. There were so many doctrines that had gone around. So Paul is telling Timothy that, yes, I'm coming to you, I'm not coming to you as another preacher.
We can call him Nikolaya, because he's addressing the factions. And by then, we had someone by the name Nikolaya, who was coming up with his false teachings, and people like were following him.
Sure, so I... Sure. So I, Paul is trying to tell Timothy that I'm not coming with my own teachings, with my own understanding. I'm with my own doctrine that I've coined, but I'm coming expressly with the authority of Christ who has taught me and I'm, I'm teaching you now. So you have to learn from me. And, and I think something that we ought to learn, that also in the modern world, there are so many, there, there are people who say that you can do good deeds and then God can accept you.
Yes.
So that we have to accept that the only sacrifice that can enable us to be, to be accepted before God is Christ himself. The, 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 the death of Christ on the cross is the only which can make us to be accepted before, before, before God. So you can be a good philanthropist, you can donate food to the needy. You can do good things to others who are suffering and all those things that, but those things cannot really eh, make you accepted before the Lord. The only thing that can make you accepted before the Lord is you being, accepting the blood of Christ and acknowledging that it's, it's only the blood of Christ that can go to, to heal us. So I think that's what Paul wants to emphasize, that this, despite our good, us being, you, you have, having humility, having patience with others, having good deeds, those things cannot save us. Despite us being so active in church, being an elder, being a deacon, those things can already. Even if you wake up every morning and come and arrange the church so that others who, who come and feel the, feel the, feel the comfort of the church, that thing cannot save you. But the only thing that can save you is accepting the blood of Christ for you to be able to redeem from the sinful nature that we are in.
Amen. Great. Maybe someone has a question or addition before you make a step beyond that? Yes, there's a comment here. My sister, or there's an addition?
Saying, there's, he mentions ordination.
Yes.
If you read other versions, they say, "I am ordained a preacher." Not just a preacher, but ordained.
He's ordained.
Yes. So this one also helps us to understand, to know the importance of ordination. Being ordained for God's work, being consecrated, being set aside, being, you know, given, put, hands being put on you or being anointed.
Anointed.
Yes. So when you have that ordination, you have that anointment, you have the authority to be able to speak God's word with authority, you know, with power, without fear and trembling, you know?
Yes.
We, we speak it as if it is your own, you, you, you own it, you know, it's part of you. Because Jesus Christ has ordained you, he has given that power. And that's what we have in, even in our churches. We have ordained ministers and they have that respect that is due for them. Thank you.
Just, just to mention, to mention something small, so that it can, it will enable us to understand the subsequent verses that from verse eight going downwards. As I said last week, there's something Paul is trying to teach Paul about authority, us respecting the authority. Remember Jesus says that nobody comes to the Father except through who? Through his, through me. So if you have seen me, you've seen the Father. You can't see the Father without seeing Christ. And also Paul is bringing another issue here, that eh, for us to be able to see the Father, he's trying to emphasize that, that issue. So eh, we're going to, we're going to subsequent verses, you'll see how we're supposed to pray, we're supposed to raise, how we are supposed to be able to worship God and pray, because the, the, the chapter talks about praying. And how that authority is supposed to go downwards, the leaders who's supposed to lay hands on others and who has that power. So there's authority that, um, and the respect of authority that Paul is really trying to emphasize through the verses. And it's going to come out so clear as we go downwards.
Thank you very much. Actually, our viewers, we are talking about the instructions on worship that is found in the book of First Timothy, chapter two, verse one downwards. And here we are dealing with verse seven. I think now we are reading verse eight and see what God has given us in that verse eight. Uh, if someone can give us. Jobu, give us verse eight.
Verse, verse eight, the Bible says, "Therefore I desire that the men pray everywhere, lifting up holy hands without wrath and doubting."
Great. The men to lift up holy hands without wrath, I think there's a, there's something that we have to unpack. What is it in the holy hands? What are in my hands that I can be called holy hands or can be called an holy hands or sinful hands? Why should we, why should we have that embassy? Yes, brother Manisa?
You know, I want men everywhere to pray. Men to lift their hands in prayer must be devoted to God and pleasing to him. When we talk about hands, what are we referring? It's action. It's not a literal, most of the time it's not a literal hands anyway, it is the action.
True.
And when we say the holy hands means must be, your action must be acceptable towards God. That's I can say, when say lifting holy hands means the men must live pure life.
Thank you very much. I see Elder is nodding the head, he's like he has something to give us. But before he comes in, actually what he is trying to tell us, when we talk about holy hands, it is like your actions. Actually hands, they are there to give us any action that you want. If want to read the Bible, use the hand to open and do everything. Now here, if our actions directly glorifies God, I think that's what Paul is trying to tell us, that we lift up our holy hands. It's like our actions should be directly connected, connected to God in that glory that God is seen. And again, at the same time, what should also be seen in that holy hand is like, is like if at all, we are too much about knowing how we should glorify God or how we should think about to glorify God, then we gauge our actions and make sure that they are in contact or they are in harmony with God's word. Elder Ken Gumbey, welcome very much. I see you. Is it that maybe you are coming in to discuss, but just an invitation to the discussion? Ah, yes, Elder, you asked for permission before.
Thank you. Um, we are talking about hands, right?
Yes.
And the brother has talked about work, you know? Hands do work, they do things, right? They do good works or even bad works.
Yes.
They can kill, they can bless, right? They can help. So you find that hands, they have a greater meaning. But if you take it literally, sometimes, you know, people take it literal, you know? When they are praying, they lift their hands. It's okay, it's okay. Because we remember when eh, the Israelites were fighting, the enemies and Moses was in there, you know?
Aaron was lifting up their hands.
Yes, they were lifting up their hands.
Yes.
And when the hands came down, they were defeated. Remember that in the Bible?
It's true.
Yeah. Lifting of hands also, it's a sacrifice, you know? I don't know if you've tried to lift hands. How, for how long can you do it? You get tired very easily, right?
It cannot go beyond three minutes.
You see? So you have to really sacrifice and eh, get, be devoted to do that. It means some devotion sort of, some being devoted to do that and some sacrifice. So, you know, eh, holy hands are the hands that do good works. You know, for example, let me take a, a practical example.
Yes.
I don't know if you've seen some families eh, where women or the mother is practicing witchcraft.
Yes.
Yeah? Using the same hands to bewitch other people's children, you know, take things and do those funny things, you know?
Yes.
And using the same hands to cook for her children at home.
Yes.
Have you seen, if you look at those families, do you see any prosperity? Do, do they go to school and prosper? Those children.
Hypocrisy is seen there.
Yes. If you go and do research, you find that the, the families that practice those kind of things, the children don't go far. Because it's the same hands that you are doing to curse other people and you're using the same hands to, it cannot bring, bring blessings to your children.
Very true.
So if you have clean hands.
Yes.
That don't pour blood.
Yes.
Then if you don't commit sin with the same hands.
Yes.
There could be a, a real blessings. And that's why you find that during dedication, ordination.
Yes.
We say they are putting hands on the children, placing hands on the, the, the leaders, etc. You know, that's, it has a great impact, not just lifting. People, you can use it to pray of course, but if you are doing sin, you are using the same hands to commit sin, whether you lift your hands or not, it might not make a big difference. Thank you.
Let me, let me read my version, the way it says, it talks about the verse.
Yes.
It was verse eight, right?
Yes.
"I want the men everywhere to pray. Men who lift their hands in prayer must be devoted to God and pleasing to him. They must be men who keep themselves from getting angry and having arguments." And when you read, eh, when you, if you've been careful, when they read from which, is it titles or Timothy when they are ordering elders and deacons? These are some of the things that they, they lead. So eh, in the context, I think, in the context in which Paul was writing this letter, men used to lead services. Actually, they used to, women and men used to stay in different sections of the, of the, of the church. And men were, men, even, even up to now, men are the ones who lead the church, are the ones, we are elder, we, we don't, still in our church, we don't order in women to be elders. So we, we, so the thing is trying to emphasize that the men who are, who are leading the church then should be able to be, who are, who have been ordained and should be able to have those, eh, to have those. So that's what it means by being holy. Also, there's something which has been mentioned that I want the men everywhere. Actually, the everywhere there means that in every church, in every, in every church that Paul is, Timothy was, eh, every church that was under Timothy, that every church should be able to have these qualifications. So that's the meaning of the everywhere in that, in that chapter eight and verse eight rather.
Thank you very much. Psalms, chapter twenty-six, verse five. There's something good there, I think we can share. Psalms, chapter twenty-six, verse five. May someone read for me. I love it when someone reads, then I expound on the same. Psalms, chapter twenty-six.
Psalms, chapter twenty-six, verse five.
Eh, it's better you start from verse one to get the context.
Okay, Psalms, chapter twenty-six, verse one to verse five, the Bible says.
Yes.
"Judge me, O Lord, for I have worked in my integrity. I have trusted also in the Lord; therefore I shall not slide."
Wait a little. I think we are building the context of that verse five. He's saying that judge me not, O Lord, I've worked in the integrity. There's an action that is happening there, but there's a quantifier there. He has not just worked, but with what? Integrity, some intelligences in there, in it. Continue.
"I have trusted also in the Lord; therefore I shall not slide."
Continue.
"Examine me, O Lord, and prove me. Try my reins and my heart; for your loving kindness is before my eyes."
Yes.
"And I have worked in your truth. I have not sat with the vain persons, neither will I go in with dissemblers. I have hated the congregation of the evil doers, and will not sit with the wicked."
Verse six?
"I will wash my hands in innocency."
"I will wash my hands in innocency." In other terms, what, what, what is innocent into? The innocence is coming in a way that when you compare his actions that he has been doing, he has not found where he has gone astray. He has walked in truth, he has walked in intelligence, his heart has been always pure. Therefore, he is very innocent. He has washed his hands. Then it means he has washed his actions. His actions are very innocent. It finds no judgment in that. Verse nine, First Timothy. We continue. But I think before, before we go to verse nine.
Yes.
We need to connect something there. Eh, "I want men everywhere to lift, everywhere, to lift up holy hands in prayers without anger or disputing." Why? Why should we have that towards anger and disputing?
Yeah, thank you Ferma. In fact, that's what I was trying to mention.
Yes.
They say, "There must be men who keep themselves from getting angry and having arguments."
Yes.
Those things are connected. If you refer Paul, when he's writing, said he's a teacher.
Yes.
And it's not a teacher, or not only a teacher.
Uh huh.
But mature elderly.
True.
You know, elder year, when you was our age, you could entertain argument so much, like us. You can argue, argue, but, and I, I can get even angry. You see, keep it, if you, and I can say it.
True.
But when you grow, as you grow in age.
Yes.
We realize that those argument was just a nonsense. Too mature, was too mature. Now Paul is talking to men here, they need to be mature.
Yes.
When they are teaching, they know they, what to avoid and it's not to go to, to be angry. That's why in fact, it's an, it's a warning or caution to us, by the way, you need to be mature. A mature person, I say go kaserika yin si. Now I say go argue of our small things. Yeah.
They normally say, we, we studied, was it geography or science? They say the higher you go.
The cooler it become.
The higher you go.
The cooler it become.
Yes.
Which means the more you grow.
Yes. You cool down. That's what happens. Yeah, naturally.
The book of Isaiah, chapter eleven, verse one. Let us get something there in relation to that, the higher you go, the cooler it become. Isaiah, chapter one, verse one. Chapter eleven, verse one, I'm sorry. Chapter eleven, verse one.
Yes?
Yes.
"The Lord said, 'I loved Israel when he was a child, and I called my, my, my son out of Egypt; but the more I called the Israelites, the more they left me. The Israelites gave sacrifices to the false gods, gods, and burned incense to the idols."
Thank you very much. When Israelites were called, they were a child. Want you to see the metaphor there. Childish, how does it come here? Were all of them under infancy, that's under six years? What was in that, in that childish? What was in that childish? Actually, he's talking about the, the spiritual growth. It's like it was then that they had just met God. Now the first time they had found, they had an experience with God. Now it's all like they were learning much about him. It was not, that spiritual standards were not too old in them. They were still young, which means they had a time to grow. Even it happens to, eh, eh, up, unto us right now, when we meet the salvation, when you get salvation, you get Jesus Christ. Your experience with someone who has been in church a number of years, it is very different. The way you handle things and the way the other person handles is very different. You can read a statement in the Bible and feel like, ah, here it means God is, is contradicting himself. But now when you come to get the same person, someone who has been the same faith for quite some times, when you read the same verse, I think he has a number of interpretations and a good interpretation that does not feel like he's contradicting himself. Verse nine?
I have a question before you move on. The Bible says, was it my version? "Therefore I desire that the men..." Eh, does Paul say specifically the men, the male species or? I don't know. Maybe someone expand on that.
I see Manisa is so much happy with that question. Calm me.
He was directing the men.
Yes.
Because when you go to nine.
Yes.
He's referring to women.
Good. Let us go to nine. Let us, just hold there. Put our finger there. Let us go to nine and see what is in nine, verse nine.
Before nine.
Yes.
I want to add something. You know, actually, there's something happening. Now, Paul is saying, men should do what? Pray.
Yes.
In fact, but do you know what is happening right now? It's upside down. It's the people pray, that women.
The women who are praying so much.
Yeah. Men that are no longer, by the way, go anywhere. Men, they run away from prayer, they go to politics. Ayah. I, I think, page twenty-nine of Adventist Tion, "Mother's Position and Responsibility." You can get surprised. He's saying, "Let every mother feel that the moment, not, let me go to almost the last of them. Then it will be found..." Let me read on that paragraph, because he's talking about women praying to their childrens. "Let every mother feel that her moments are priceless. Her work will be tested in the solemn days of account. Then it will be found that many of their failures and crimes of men and women have resulted from the ignorance and neglect, neglect of those who, those whose duty it was to carry their children fit in the right way. Then it will be found that many who have placed the work with their light of genius and truth and ordiness hold the principle that were, that were the main spring of their influence and success, success to a praying Christian mother." Success of a Christian, praying more, Christian mother. It means men have a challenge.
I feel like I should say something, Brian, calm me.
Actually, next, let us.
Let us have this one first.
Okay. So I just wanted to add on, so.
So I just wanted to add on, so the reason I ask that question is,
Yes.
because at the end of that verse,
Yes.
my version says, without wrath and doubting. So there's an aspect of praying accompanied with faith as men. So it is essential that whenever we pray, whenever the elders pray to us, it will be disappointing for these elders giving us, giving them our prayer requests, and they pray without that faith, accompanying that faith, because when we give them our prayer requests, we expect it is an elder, so we expect much from them.
It's true.
So it is, uh, it is supposed to be them themselves, they shouldn't accompany doubting when they pray, yeah.
Good. Whenever there's an ordination made, I think it comes to you that it is a task that God has bestowed on to you. It is you now to go out. I think it is the book of James, chapter five, verse sixteen. May someone read for us there. James, chapter five, verse sixteen. I'm just emphasizing on the, on the point of my brother Job here. He's telling us that elders, when they are praying for us, let them not just pray, but their prayers should have a serious contingent, accompaniment, that is faith in it. May someone read verse sixteen, James, chapter five, verse sixteen. Yes? Yes? The, the, the prayer of what? May someone start from verse thirteen, going downwards. And I need it in King James Version if possible. Jobo give us your version.
My version says, is anyone among you suffering? Let him pray. Is anyone cheerful? Let him sing sounds. Is anyone among you sick? Let him call for the elders of the church.
Let him do what? Call for the elders of the church?
Yes, and let them pray over him, anointing him with oil in the name of the Lord.
Continue.
And the prayer of faith will save the sick.
And the prayer of what?
And the Lord will raise him up, and if, if he has committed sins, he will be forgiven.
Amen. The prayer of faith. And again, directly as Jobo has said, is mentioning the elders. Let the elders pray, and the prayer made in faith will heal the sick, which means the prayer made without the faith is no healing. Verse nine. We are now back to second Timothy, no, first Timothy, chapter two, verse nine.
It says, in like manner also, that the women adorn themselves in modest apparel with property and moderation, not with braided hair or gold or pearls or costly clothing.
Oh, wait, this is where many men, we feel like we should run away from the pulpit. But now, since it is here with us, we shall see what God is trying to tell us. Uh, remember, we are getting the instructions about worship. From the beginning, we have been talking about the prayers, and now we have emphasized so much that it is a prayer made in Jesus Christ with the faith in Jesus Christ, verse six says, it says, says about testifying who Jesus Christ is. And again, verse five also, it says that it is one God, for there is one God, there is one Jesus, there is one salvation. Now here, verse eight, it has been talking about men, how they, what they should be doing in church. And now they are away from men, how they should pray without anger and pray with faith. Here it verse nine, it is now instructions on how ladies should adorn themselves, or how they should approach God in their worship. Read it again, Job.
In like manner also,
Yes.
that the women adorn themselves in modest apparel with property and moderation, not with braided hair or gold or pearls or costly clothing.
I invite for the comments and the questions on that verse. Yes, Brian?
In King James, it says, in like, in like manner, still?
Yes.
So the same principle that has been applied in verse eight.
Yes.
Um, in terms of prayer, is the same principle that's being applied, because when someone said in like manner also, what does it mean?
There's something that has already happened, now it is a comparison.
It's kind of, it's kind of, we should, we are supposed to copy, copy paste.
Yes.
So it says, I, I want the women to make themselves attractive in the right what? In the right way. So appropriate, it talks about appropriate dressing of women, and, and, and it's emphasizing that, um, the attractiveness should be, they should make themselves attractive by the good things that they do what?
They do.
They do. And here, I think this is one of the things that we, we, it talks about also, they should not draw attention to themselves with fancy hairstyles and, or gold jewelry, or pearls or expensive clothes. And, and I think, my understanding of this verse has been, has been that, um, maybe the thing should be able to ask herself, what is appropriate? Is appropriate, uh, talks in, in verse eight, it, it talks about everywhere. Do we have appropriate for, for clans and appropriate for, for my local church? Maybe that's something we really should, we're supposed to, because Paul's talking, saying that in the same manner, that the same principle of prayer that is being applied in, in verse eight, it talks that the, the way every church should be able to pray is the same, it should be able to cut across all the Christian, Christian family churches. And also in verse eight, in verse nine, is, we are talking about attractiveness and about appropriate dressing. So the appropriate dressing in, in our church, in central church, in parklands, or in my, my Sogge, uh, the central church should be the what? Universal, we should be able to have a similar way, we, all of us, with, the way we dress should be able, we should never say like, hey, this one is appropriate for central church? And this one is appropriate for?
Parklands.
For parklands.
This is appropriate for another church in a village.
Yeah, and I think it's trying to put across that when we dress, we should not be able to make people draw our attention to, to us. Like, I'm dressed in a manner that, in a yellow suit, and I'm preaching, you know, like, okay, what is this person doing? So, uh, when we're asking us, when we're, when I'm coming out of the house in the morning and going, going out to church to worship, I should be able to ask myself, will this one draw attention, people to me? Am I will it? Give people peace to draw attention to the message of the day, especially for ministers. That whatever you are dressing, it should be able to, it should not be able to draw people to you, but should be able to draw people to the message that you are giving them. So it's something that we are supposed to ask ourselves and ask, answer, answer ourselves. We, I think in this forum, we not, we are not going to define what is long enough, what is appropriate for a lady, and what is, but, you ask yourself, whatever I'm dressing today, me, that's the principle normally, as, uh, when somebody asks me about what is appropriate for a lady to dress, just stand before the mirror and ask yourself, if I dress the way I'm dressed today, am I going to affect a brother? Am I going to affect a sister? All those things, when you answer yourself those question, then, one will walk out of the house confidently as the, that of the most hand come to church and worship your God.
Thank you very much, I've had a big man behind me, well, Manisa.
Mine, some section is of nine is answered by a ten, but my, I'm concerned when we are talking about men, what especially thing of hands? We mentioned about the character, the action that the, the man, gender must be holy or do things that will give glory to God.
Yes.
And likewise to women, that mentioned aspect of being attractive. You know, attractive is very fundamental here. Now, it's a challenge that any woman.
Yes.
You must make yourself be attractive. Not, I don't know the way of attractive, but make yourself to be attractive. And the way Paul emphasized to be attractive also, he said, but, but they should make themselves attractive by the good things they do.
Uh huh.
Yeah, not your physical appearance.
Yes.
So much, but what you do is going to make you attractive. And when you go to the section when Ellen tried to describe a woman, or according to proverb thirty-one, a woman is that somebody who can attract, if he refers, as somebody who has a lot of, she's hospi, hospitality.
Hospitality.
Yeah, hospitality. The Kekuja Pacha, to meto talking, and they say, Lani, Nakola, yeah. You're nipping. Hey, you're nipping attractive by the way.
Uh, Manisa, I think you are not wrong, I see, there's a lady nodding the head saying, hmm, yes.
It's true, it's not dressing or anything, yeah. When we go to clothes.
Yes.
Aspect or dressing.
Yes.
You mentioned about be sensible. According to their, their clothing, attractive, you have finished that one, your action hospitality. Number two, we go, their clothes should be sensible and appropriate. Sensible, it is one thing, sensibility, unless you have lost a common sense, you will not know that this is sensible or not sensible. Sensibility is a straight word. You cannot take the clothes you dress, like any system, I'm not gonna fast leave person, I'm a semi leave person, it's for bathroom. We are not sensible there. There's a dressing code in this country. When you're going to office, you know very well how you are dressed. If you ask somebody, are you dressed appropriate? They'll tell you, no, I've not dressed appropriate, I've dressed today casually, because it's a casual, and it's appropriate, they know very well. You know, we cannot define dressing code, but you yourself, you know very well. You know, as Brian said, by seeing yourself in mirror, no, let nobody lie to you, you know very well that if I dress appropriate or not appropriate, you know very well.
Manisa, Manisa is telling us that in this country, there's a dressing code, there's a way out you should dress when you are in a bathroom. Yes, we are doing Bible study whereby we are centering our mind towards the Bible tells us. Actually, everything that we do, being called a Christian, if there's anything of a reference that you should have, it's just the Bible, isn't it? Now, when you talk about dressing code, if there's someone we should ask, if there's a principle that we should ask, I think the Bible tells us best, isn't it? Isn't it?
I think, uh, I have something.
Please.
I don't want us to go that direction, to discuss the dressing code.
Yes.
I know we are dressing the world, right? Yes, and, uh, as where we are seated, there is the way we dress.
Yes.
Yeah? And we think that is the right way of dressing.
True.
When you go to the Masai, there's a way they dress.
Yes.
And they believe that is the best way they dress. When you go to Trukana, there's the way they dress. You go to the Muslim world, you know, the Arabic world, Asia, there's the way they dress.
True.
When you go to green, green, it's called Greenwich, Greenland, or whatever, you know, the cold where Eskimos live. You know, the way they dress, very heavy dress because it's very cold, right?
True.
So I don't want us to go into that, because we will be talking about how our environment is. Uh, but what I think Paul is trying to talk about is, uh, you know, this is a very controversial topic, yeah? Dressing. You know, how modest is modest, right? Um, when they are talking about adornment, you know, adornment is translated, uh, as cosm, cosmio. Cosmio. And cosmio comes from cosmio, we get the word cosmetic. You know cosmetics?
Yes.
Yes. And this word also, uh, comes from the word cosmos. You know cosmos? The globe, the world, right?
World.
Cosmos. So when you say you are dressing like the world, you are doing like the world, you are cosmo, cosmosing like the world, you know? You are adorning like the world, cosmetics. And, uh, uh, Paul talks about this because makeup, you know, putting your face together in order, making yourself, you know, the ladies know, they do it, yeah? And why did he bring this? We had just talked about men, orderliness with the men, isn't it? That's when we said verse one up to verses seven, it was talking about men, how you do prayer, how do you conduct yourself, et cetera. Now, we are talking about ladies. How can ladies conduct themselves in a godly way when they come before God? Now, we are talking about orderliness when they come before God. You know, there's, when you are reading the, the Bible, there's always what we call context. You look at the context, yeah? The environment. When this was being written, it was being read to who? At that particular time, who was the audience? How are they doing things? Now we found that they discovered is that ladies were taking too much time to adorn themselves. They put all the time adorning.
Themselves.
They put all the money adorning.
Themselves.
To buy the golden rings, golden things, doing the hair. I know there are many hairstyles, when you are talking about, you know, when you read the version, they talk about braiding. But it's not about braiding, it's about the hairstyle. Because there are people who braid, others don't braid. But some of, a braided hair is very expensive then, even braided hair. So they put too much money until they forget God. You know, you put too much money in adorning yourself, you forget about, you don't have time with God. So they are saying that be modest, reduce the time you put in adorning your,
Let's say.
the money you put in, I don't, you reduce, so that you can be left with some money to do God's work, you know? So what, what I'm trying to say is that, uh, it's not saying that women should be shaggy, no. They have to be smart, right? They have to be very smart.
There they can applaud, you can see, they're smiling, yes.
They have to be smart.
True.
And in that smartness, you have to be modest.
True.
You know, you can make yourself in a way that when you come for the service in front here, in the church.
Yes.
The men don't concentrate on God's word. Yeah, they'll be looking at your skirt, short skirt here.
Yes.
They look at your hips, right? Yeah? You've done very fancy hair, the men are dying in church because of you. Yeah? You are putting on a, what do you call it? This one, you know, boop top, that one, yeah, this one. This one here. So up here, we, men can be able to see how you are made, and they won't concentrate. You might not have a problem yourself, but you are causing a problem to.
Someone else.
To someone else. So this problem was there during Paul's time, during, on adornment, and it is with us now. That's why when you read Proverbs, chapter eleven, verse twenty-two, there's something there. It says that, as a ring of gold in a wise, in a swine's snort, so is a beautiful woman who lacks discretion. You can be very beautiful, you adorn yourself, but you are, you are, you are rotten character.
True.
So it cannot help. That's why he's saying that it's better to adorn, work on your character, isn't it? Work on your, 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 your characters, to be attractive, more than the, the dress. But does it mean you dress shaggy? No. Dress nicely, but moderately, but with good character, things will be, will be wow.
Thank you very much. Wow. I knew there could be some kind of discussions on this. Uh, generally, all in all, one thing I know, uh, when Jesus Christ was telling the disciples that, uh, he's going to, in heaven to, he's going to heaven to make for us mansions, and he says that if it were not, what will I have done? I would have told you, in our eating, in our dressing, in everything, God has told us. When he talks about adorning, there's a way out we have been told in the Bible to adorn ourselves. If he will have not told us, that verse there will have not been relevant. It's only that we need sometimes to delve our mind in the Bible, to seek a verse and a verse, a verse and a verse, and settle on the exact thing that God has told us to do. The other thing is that, uh, the book of Ecclesiastes, chapter seven, verse twenty-nine. Chapter seven, verse twenty-nine, we are finishing, I think I'm the last person to talk, then I usher in Brian to give us the last words. Ecclesiastes, chapter seven, verse twenty-nine, may someone read for us. I will read, the Bible says, this only have I found. God made mankind upright, but men have gone in search of many schemes. How we shall have heard a Swahili Bible. It gives a very good explanation about that. Great, we are made in a very simple manner, but where we feel like we are not, we are not enough, it is not enough. That's why we go forth, looking for these makeups, dressing the way we want, trying to modify what God, what God created and felt like it is okay with him, but for us, we see that it is not okay, we want to go to an extra mile. I think that's all that we have today.
Before we finish, before Brian comes in, just to protect our sisters.
Yes.
And to encourage them, yeah? If you read Ephesians, chapter two, verse ten, it says, "For we are his workmanship..."
Yes.
"...created in Christ Jesus for good works, which God prepared beforehand so that we will work in them." We are created in Christ, we are his workmanship, we are wonderfully and fearfully.
Made.
Made. So nobody should deny you, nobody should bother you, isn't it? Yes, you are God's creature, and take it that way. The closing short, it says, "Men promote godliness through public prayer," you remember? From verse one coming down?
Yes.
Yes, "And women promote godliness through public example."
Very big.
Public.
Example.
The way you look, the way you do things, you promote godliness. But men, you promote goodness by?
Public prayers.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Brian, the last words, then we finish.
Thank you so much, because of time, we'll wind it up there, and we'll continue from verse ten, ten from next Tuesday. We believe that the Lord will be good to us, so that we get time to come and finish the chapter. So thank you so much, we've, we've seen our work is cut out. You know, in the, in the world, we may deliberate that you're, men and, men and, and the women have same workout, cutout mission. But we have different work cut out for each one of us as men and as, as, as women. So actually, when we read Exodus twenty-three, verse seventeen.
Yes.
When they were attending the festivities, men were, it was mandatory for, kind of mandatory for men to attend. Actually, all men were supposed to attend all the festivities, but for women, I think they were supposed to, they could remain. So men, men, we should be able to ask ourselves, are we standing our, are we doing our, are we filling our gap in the, in the family of Christ? And women also ask themselves, are we filling our gap in the family of Christ? So the gaps you are seeing in the society, the gaps you are seeing in the church, it could be, we are not playing our role as God ordained us to do it in the world, amen, in the church. So when you do that, we love a healthy family and a healthy church, and God will bless each one of us. So we'll have our word of prayer, and we'll wind up from our elder king. A final prayer.
Check, let's pray. Our Father in heaven, Lord, we thank you for allowing us to hear your word, even to discuss things that are mysteries, written for us to work in them. We thank you that you have given us a mind that is capable of understanding such mysteries and to apply them in our lives. We pray that it is not in vain that we gather here and study these things, that as they are studied and said and spoken, they may have life in our, in our hearts, that they may be a guide to the paths that we walk, and they may be life unto our own lives, so that you may be glorified here on earth. We ask, Lord, that you may help us to continue to grow spiritually, to learn, even in our relationships with you and with others. We pray, my Father, that that which we do not understand, you may apply it in our lives, so that it may have a practical lesson that can be sunk deep in the heart. We thank you for all that has been done to make it possible for us to be here, including those who joined us online. We commit all to you, that you may accomplish that which you may this evening. As we close this program, as we leave, Father, may you go with us, protect us on the way, guide us throughout the few hours that are left, as we enter into the hours of the night. My God, may you provide, may you sustain, may you heal, and more importantly, may you bless us by covering us with the precious blood of your Son. For we have prayed in his holy name, in the name of Jesus, amen.
Our technical team, thank you very much. The audience here and the contributors, thank you very much. Till next week, see you.